Horrible. Okay.
So I'm recording.
Recording in process. I'm looking at baby pictures. I'm going to call. Very joint special meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to call the Board of County Commission person of the meeting to orders. We're we're now going to be orderly. And I'm going to hand it over to Chair Hall.
I'm going to call the order, the January twenty seventh meeting, joint meeting with the V O C C. And I'm going to start the meeting by a roll call with planning commissioners. Chris?
Chris Willen.
Cynthia Cohen.
Mike Schultz.
Richard Hall.
Eldy Richard.
Kevin Koper.
Andrew Schwartz.
Art Strum.
Thank you. And with that done, we can begin the meeting. And the agenda starts with public comment.
There's no public in attendance online. There are some in the room.
You might want to. Now close here you'll comments. I'm going to close the public comment period. And we could begin the next agenda item, especially potential action.
I'll jump in with an introduction and perhaps ask others to join in with me. I'm Joel Peterson, a planner, Jefferson County Community Development. And we'll be talking tonight about our annual work plan, what has happened in two thousand and twenty four in our planning commission. And then have an opportunity for discussion and just kind of open dialogue. We started doing these joint workshops about four years ago. It was give us the opportunity to kind of complete the circle in our planning to involve the planning commission and E C D and the board together when looking at work planning. And then also it served a good great purpose of just having face to face time. As as we know from the Planning Enabling Act, we have a Board of County Commissioners that establishes a planning department and a planning commission to represent the public works with the planning department and call ourselves the planning agency. So this kind of outlines the relationship between board and planning commission. It's not always a one way relationship of board tasking the planning commission. Sometimes D C D and the planning commission have projects that want to break to the board. So this kind of meeting gives us a chance to discuss things that are on our minds and and maybe I'll pass the table to Joshua momentarily here to if you want to have any opening remarks before I get into the power.
Thanks, Joe. I think you've summarized it well. I think we have. So for the meeting, we're goal has prepared a summary of last year's act, just like you did last year for the year prior. And so they'll run through that and see if there's any questions and then we're getting into the heart of the agenda, which is back and forth between the county commissioners and so planning commissioners and D C P staff as well.
Thank you. Yeah. And so this is tonight's a little bit different than what we could normally have been doing. We've had opportunity and and resources in the past to set up a Saturday for this kind of meeting in the morning. We need the planning commission. We do some training and work planning. The afternoon, we need to work on the commissioners. That model is a little different than what we could accomplish this year with our busy schedules. So we focus on just this summary and update and base times with our board. So I'll kick it off from here. And you do pull straight or if not, that's okay.
Well, we're trying to keep an eye on the attendee because I'm sorry.
No problem.
Everyone, but.
I'll ask someone to be my slide indexer.
Yeah, okay, I'll move slides for everybody.
So I'm just going to summarize tonight's agenda that you have in front of you. These are the highlights. So we're going to look at twenty twenty four planning commission work. We'll look at what's coming up for this year. And then talk about coordination between B O C C and planning commission in the discussion. So I do have passed out also a summary of our meetings, funding meetings of two thousand and twenty four. And this was just to give us a review at a glance of the work that we've accomplished. This slide summarizes that handout that last year we did the two thousand and twenty four annual amendment cycle concurrently with our two thousand and twenty five periodic updates. So we had two processes going concurrently. We spent significant time on the short term rental ordinance and flood damage prevention ordinance. Some of it is ongoing. The planning commission started out this spring, I believe it was reviewing the vision statement of the comprehensive plan to kind of check in and bring the community vision forward for our comp plan update. And then also we started with this comprehensive plan of outreach in two thousand and twenty four with some community meetings in Brennan and Quillsey centered around how can we best communicate with your community? How do we engage you in this process? The next slide. Just a quick report on the planning commission meetings. We meet the first and third Wednesdays of each month. So we have a potential of twenty four possible regular planning commission meetings. We held seventeen regular meetings, canceled seven meetings along through this last year, and we held a special meeting. So that is a quick overview of, and I think cancelling seven meetings during the course of the year is about on par with what we've done in years past. There are times when the work just is not ready. And we wanted to have productive planning commission meetings and not just meet to meet. And then other times a lot is ready. And so we have a special had a total special meeting when we had a lot of work coming through at one point. Next slide. Looking for our planning for two thousand and twenty five. We're in the in the throes of our comprehensive plan periodic update meeting where entering into extensive public outreach process. We're developing draft materials with our consultants, Burke and Tony. And we'll have some draft products for the public to comment on and be at our planning commission soon. I have a slide talking about in more detail our outreach schedule. Also with our periodic update, we're doing a critical area ordinance update. And this will be the process that we run concurrent.
Can you speak up? There were the messages in the chat. We can't read it, but I've been thinking they can't hear you.
Yeah, maybe I'll stand closer to the. And so we're running concurrently our critical areas ordinance update with the comp plan periodic review. A little bit more about that later. We're going to be having a hearing coming up at our next planning mission meeting February fifth for our short term rentals ordinance. And then boards will be seeing planning commission recommendations on that coming end of February. There are some P C maintenance items that we have every year. March seventeen is the date when is the revolving date when seats become available on the planning commission. We have one seat for each district that will come up available at March seventeen. And the the process as we've run it in the county is that an incumbent can decide that they'd like to continue or or not. And we also are required to advertise. So sometimes we end up doing interviews with incumbents and people who are new and wanting to be on the planning mission. So we'll have that coming up. Next month, we'll begin advertising and leader for planning commission seats for anyone interested in the planning commission. And we'll see what that yields for us. Next slide. The the next series of slides are more detailed about our comprehensive plan periodic update project. This is the mainstay of what's coming up this year. So just to give you an idea of our timeframe for the project, there are three stages. We've broken this into the the first one, January through March, we're developing information. We're setting up our outreach venues and that will in March through May will be meeting with the public, having public meetings, open houses and getting comments about our comprehensive plan updates. And then May and June, we anticipate this, which again going to the Board of County Commissioners for their review. So far, what we're experiencing is that we'll probably it may be June, July, or or something close to these dates. May our schedule may extend a little bit. We'll talk about that more in a moment. Next slide. This is not going to be readable at this scale. What I've outlined is we've been doing planning for these meetings. So it's offering was this meeting tonight. Meetings, one, two, three, and four are four meetings on the road for the planning commission to meet in the communities. So meeting number one, we're going to have a kickoff at in Port Hadlock at W S U Extension Center, which is our our new regular venue for the planning nation. We hope to have a focus on the urban growth area at our first public open house. Our second open house is scheduled for March fifth at the Brennan Community Center. Our third outreach with March nineteen at the Gardner Community Center. And our fourth meeting, March twenty sixth. Quillsey School is what we are attempting is still pending. We're still working on the venue and the time that for March.
The one you said you were going to talk about the urban growth area, you're talking about the Port Hadlock.
Port Hadlock.
Okay.
Growth area.
They currently only have one, so it's just good.
And how do you pronounce that? Is there a prefer preference whether Fugue or Fuga? What is the planning commission believe?
I'm Fuga personally.
I was Fuga at first, but now I'm fully frankly in the Fugue.
The yeah, we've we've had some discussions with our prosecuting attorney's office of how do we land on a on a consistent name? And so we're we're working that out.
We need the I in there.
It's Irondale and Port Hadlock U G A, which has been kind of a long term name. We've called it Irondale and Port Hadlock U G A. But the acronym is P H U G A. Leaves the I out. So we're working on this and see what happens. Yeah, yeah. So you had a comment, there's only one U G A and.
There has only been one. So you just mentioned U G A and I was thinking Port Townsend, but.
We have to be careful now. No, I do, because there is a Port Townsend urban growth area.
Yeah.
Whose boundaries extend into the county.
Yeah.
Which the county ministers. Yeah, that new new work that you've all done. Next slide. But yeah, here we go. So we're working with the consultants to develop some posters and outreach materials for these open houses. And the next couple of slides are just examples of the artwork and and update.
Ujipas House? They're fabulous.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Carolyn. The next slide. Next slide. Okay, now this is an example of an element where we're looking at goals and policies and asking for the public's input on goals and policies. The next slide. Okay, this is a diagram that appears in our public participation plan that you may have all seen. Apologize for the lack of density with this projector. I wanted to point out two things. This is our two thousand and twenty five update webpage, our public engagement hub. This is our community development webpage. We've got a lot of information about the update project. We've got a dedicated email for people to submit their comments. And we have instructions on how to submit or how what makes a good comment. We've got goals and policies from our old plan that people thank you can review and start to generate ideas of updates. The second thing I want to point out is our community based organizations. And those we we've been calling them C B Os that comes that term comes from the Department of Commerce. They've provided grant funds for community based organizations to assist counties with the development of their comprehensive plan updates. And so we've engaged a number of them. The next slide. The bolded text, the entities on the top are actually funded by commerce brands, Bayside Housing and Services. We're working with Futurewise to do outreach in connection with Aquiline and Home Tribes. Puget Sound Partnership is assisting us as well in any way that they can. Are going to ask them to review it against their checklists and perhaps provide input on our environment element. Engage Jefferson County has been helping us with the new climate element that we're required to put in the comprehensive plan. And along with those requirements are investigations into diversity, equity and inclusion and areas. There's also the term for areas that may have disparate impacts as far as climate change. There is where we maybe you think about particular disadvantaged populations. That so engaged Jefferson County is is helping us with that, along with the Climate Action Committee. Other outreach that we do that are not grant funded, community based organizations include Housing Solutions Network, Jefferson Trails Connection, Jefferson Land Trust. Those are examples of community organizations that are really invested into certain topics that we have in our comp plan and can assist us. Next slide. This is just a screen capture of our Jefferson County webpage with our two thousand and twenty five comp plan page. And where to give comments, how to give comments, et cetera. Next slide. Now, following our along with our agenda in our discussion about public participation and planning. These are some ideas that we can use as prompting facilitating ideas for your discussion to come tonight. Whether it's about comprehensive plan, public outreach methods and our neighborhoods, the kind of messaging that we bring forward or strategies for outreach. If you look in the public participation plan, there are a lot of messaging helps within that plan for climate resiliency, the kinds of questions you might ask for the community. Also, the middle housing portion of our public participation plan, things you may talk to different stakeholders in your community. So I encourage you to take a look at the public participation plan. It's posted on our website. And and the board endorsed it on October ninth. We had the resolution that accepted that as our strategy. Next slide. Okay, um, so other pieces of information that we wanted to be sure we shared with you is when we're working on the two thousand and twenty five comp plan update and the critical areas ordinance. We're going to let them be on their own timeframes or their own schedules, but run it concurrently. We feel that with some of the changes we are thinking about or the state wants us to address in our critical areas ordinance. Specifically, site potential tree height measurement as a buffer measurement. We might need more time to work on critical areas ordinance rather than waiting till the comp plan is done and then start looking at adopting regulations for the comp plan. We're going to start that or it has been started along with our comp plan update. Any questions about that? Okay, the and the other item is that our project grant funding ends June thirtieth of this year. And so we want to get as much done as we can while we have those grant funds. The project will likely stretch past June thirtieth, where our third point is estimating it to be August, September before we're completed. And so the legislature has extended counties comprehensive plan updates till the end in in this route that we're in till the end of December. So otherwise, it started out to be, we have to get this done by June thirtieth, but they've allowed that that deadline to go out to December. So what that means for us is we want to make hay while we've got some grant funds. It'll likely continue further. And so that'll be another decision point as we get to July. Extending a contract for consultants or seeing what we have left to finish up. Any questions about that?
If you just you just sort of answered it with a certain possibility of extending contracts, not increasing, well, maybe also extending the animated lineup.
Yeah, that's a possibility. And we've done that in the past through a contract amendment. We're being pretty conservative in our budget, so we might have some money left over at the end of the year or in June when we anticipate running out, but we'll see how that pans out. Okay, so see, next slide is my prompting slide that we're we're now shifting into our discussion point of the evening, but I do want to ask, so I've covered what we've been doing this last year and what we're anticipating doing this two thousand and twenty five. Does anyone have questions for me if anything that I've covered or left out that you want me to cover?
What question I had was what's the next step on critical areas for us?
And you think the next step is for us to work with the consultant that's developing some proposals and we're working with the Washington Fish and Wildlife also in running some proposals past them. So right now it's kind of incubating. I believe we'll have something that will be public along the same time as we have our goals and policies updates. So that would be early February, I think, what we can anticipate having something that's tangible to look at.
It's not early February. Did you mean February? It's a little bit early. So I guess, yeah, okay. So so Joel laid out the general schedule for the complan, the complan periodic update as being like the May June timeframe where we're fully engaging with you on materials that you're reviewing along with the public. And we were hoping to be able to push the critical areas component a little bit ahead of that. So picture like after the short term rental discussion will be jumping into the critical areas discussion again, because that could, I think Commissioner Brotherton remembers this from last time and others probably too. It could take a little bit longer to work through that process. So we wanted to make sure that we're getting a jump start on that and not waiting just because we're waiting for other materials related to the confident to be developed. Plus, it's all related essentially to the code and not the comp plan. But ultimately, the critical areas requirement is part of the two thousand and twenty five periodic update. That's one of the things we need to go back and take a look at. So that's what we're anticipating now. So essentially starting the process, see where we get and either it's going to just connect right into the end game on the two thousand and twenty five periodic update. Or if magically we can work through the critical areas process first, it's okay to adopt code amendments, you know, outside of your your one time a year shot at doing your comp plan. So that's how we're looking at it. So probably more like part of March, April timeframe.
What do you recommend for the work that we've been doing on housing? On extending the prior work of, you know, many years, several different types of proposals and what do you suggest for ways of overcoming the bottlenecks that we ran up against and just a good proactive thing for us to do concurrently? You know, in a subcommittee or whatever. Are there any suggestions or thoughts about that?
That could be. We do have. We have a grant to work on middle housing and where middle housing, by definition would occur is probably in the urban growth area, the Port Hadlock urban growth area. So we don't have specific scope with the consulting and grant funding regarding the rural cluster housing concept. That's going to come from our own time in a sense. And so I think one of the the bottlenecks that that you experienced with this last time or last two years actually is finding a way to codify or put into a development regulation, how this would would work in a way that is that can be regulated or administered, I should say. And that's kind of my way that's that's cheap for the the cheaper for the person who doesn't have to do a lot of special reports and things like that.
My question is to do that first. That's really seems like what we should do first. And I swear we're in China just because another follow up conversation that George and I had also. I was asking for just ten minutes or so of everyone's time today, just to let you know that as a chair of committee on housing we're approaching several things kind of at once where we've got some ideas that we think can creatively start to be utilized conforming with G M A requirements and nursing review on rural character and all of the other elements that you know, from septic and waters and environment and, you know, everything. A couple of ways within the current code and using definitions and even clarifying definitions that aren't, you know, to suggest that kitchen is a room to prepare food in, you know. So we've got three kitchens and just about it to house, you know. My office got a microwave and I cook up stuff and then there's the pantry and the kitchen and the dining room. They closed out too many. So I think there are ways to tighten up and we've been exploring some of that in the subcommittee. I prepared a document that George and I are going to review like a planner's ideas about, hey, Kevin, this is, you know, high frizz, don't bother. But for this reason or hey, that that might be a way of actually getting to where we're trying to get. It's also in time with the new to the Senate bill or the House bill is dealing with G M A and rural housing and how to improve it. I'm not convinced that what they're suggesting, based on what I'm reading about that bill is the right methodology. But the fact that we're talking about it and, you know, it's it's a good time for us because what they're proposing in the bill is that a committee could be anybody decides what those other jurisdictions like Jefferson County could do in a way of increasing housing in rural areas and still conforming with rural character. One of the approaches we're taking with that rural character, which is such a hard and fast rule to how it's developed in the county. If you imagine, and we'll have examples of this, but there's the typical farmstead where it's got the the house, the barn, the tool shed, the chicken coop, the pig pen, hay barn and maybe a silo. Well, now it's a a house and accessory dwelling unit, an additional accessory housing unit, or maybe a, you know. If we know that the site itself can provide the water and that the stormwater and the soiled water can all be treated onsite. And it's not going to harm the local site parcel land environment. And we might be able to utilize the conservation district in ways that allows us to get free access to plans and help with creating something that has been once a year annually certified that yes, as per plans and permit and homestead plan, home plan, similar to a farm plan, all of these interactions with the site have happened. And things are, you know, alive and thriving and everything's great. And maybe it goes for a certain period of time and then it's, you know, it's every two years or three years. There's a, you know, review or whatever. But it then allows us to put more heads in beds in a rural community where, you know, the jobs that are out there on the farms or near the farms and orchards in the rural community, and they can be services, fixing tractors or whatever it is. It just seems like there is a way to get there. We're working on it now that we'll pull in some plant. And some of my citations are planning and other types of development, but within the planning community, their studies have shown the improvement in health, mental health, physical health of individuals. I mean, there's just a lot of things. It's it's similar to cluster, but you're taking the urban out of it and you're just saying it's rural now. Well, gee, how do we do it and how do we go with all character? So that's been our recent approach, just to let everybody know. Love to hear from everybody. You know, if you've got more interest, we can talk more about it one on one. And meantime, kind of getting the next layer of planner's perspective and and whatnot in how we're approaching it in the subcommittee. And then we can decide if we're, you know, uncut bait or fish.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Discussion, right? Yes. I I know that like from the planners, I've heard a little pushback in years past about like the E G O E D U pro idea and some of these problems or suggestions because of the luxury we have of an affirmative right to an A D U on every single family house. We don't want to lose that, right? As San Juan County did as when they pushed too far, right? And now I believe it's sort of the state precedent. And now I believe it's sort of the state precedent that every that that affirmative right has been passed around the state. And also with the new onsite septic code, um A D U requirements have gone from, you know. The traditional two forty gallons per day like a like a single-family house to one twenty, and environmental public health has hit to that as well. So those places that had one A D U. Could they have two A D Us with the same septic system? I'm I guess I'm just wondering, is the fruit getting lower on that tree? I'm curious D C D's thoughts and and how that mess with your guys' thought.
It's it's been a big help from our my perspective, and another um interesting element was. When we were um putting the septic system here, um just outside of town, the middle road. The fact was that um they got it down to seventy-five gallons per head. As opposed to the, you know, regular numbers, and it was because based on soil, and there was a trigger involved. Single-family residents. As soon as that was part of the mix, it became, sorry, it's gotta be a different element, so you're right, with the accessory dwelling unit, it comes down. And I think also if we get into creating our own, let's say it's a bunkhouse, doesn't have a kitchen, it's not a dwelling. All right, my soils can allow for fifty gallons. Ahead, and I can put twelve people in there and six of them are working on my farm and three of them are working locally at a mechanic shop, you know, it just becomes. Another way of meeting the demand, and I think in a science sensible. Environmentally as well as human-conscious way, so.
And my just like for the planners, my question is really. Is the risk lower to try to push that that threshold because of the kind of the the state law catching up with our. Interpretation of that previously.
Um, my review of the legislation last couple of years, um there's been a lot of housing legislation. Uh requiring A D Us to um. Higher density, release, relieving uh people from parking requirements, things like that. This legislation has all been in reference to urban areas and um. The GMA seems to, or the legislature seems to really protect that rural category, and um so I. In my phone conversations with uh like M R S C, trying to find some example or traction. Uh, through the avenue of farmer housing, or what are they doing out in in Yakima County? Or the migrant farm population, and how are they having having housing? Um, it's all been from the perspective of an urban area, urban growth area with infrastructure. Not on septic, so it is still unique, um I think just by the legislature having these discussions, trying to address the great. Um, gives us more foundation to push the envelope a little bit, but I haven't found the. Um, specific answer myself of. How do you not violate GMA? Um, or how do you develop? Probably what we're been approaching it is how do we develop such an irrefutable argument that. Everyone would be ashamed to not allow us to do this.
Which is, which is what the hearings were asked for, I mean, that's why, forgive me for. Interjecting, but when we started this process, just looking at clown counting and the ruling on their A D U expansion. And how they said, you didn't do enough homework. To make sure you're gonna do this right, this is too much of a blanket expansion. There's no rural specifics in here, there's nothing, you know, it was like a non-proposal. Ecologically. And with regard to other services and. Maybe your extension.
So there's.
So we started working on, the the concept is that people in the cities are waiting for us to come up with a solution. We can't go to the city, so we we looked at the green building program in Seattle, the pilot project program. And adapted those ideas for kind of what Kevin's talking about in a similar way. What he is developing is a a new approach to describing how the ideas fit rural character, which is. One of the elements, making it more feel, sorry.
Okay, I was just gonna point out that there are a number of. Four as of last Thursday when I was in Olympia, pieces of legislation right now supporting flexibility for housing in Lammers. Which we we have specifically been asking for for longer than I've been a commissioner, so. The legislature is starting to get used to that that being part of the conversation and. Two of these bills, WASAC, the Washington Association of Counties, which is not a bastion of progressive. Policy is actively supporting. And so I think the tenor at the state level is changing in terms of the urban rural conversation. And um it'll be interesting to see which of these proposals makes it through.
We do now allow multifamily development in our Lammers, or in our rural building centers. Um, so I I guess there's another part of the question is, why hasn't this happened? What does it take as far as? Infrastructure and economic development or population to allow some of these things to go forward also. Sorry. So back to what you were saying, Greg. So my understanding is back when we did the U D C rounder turn of the century. Um, we decided that we would have an A D U for every rural parcel in addition to the main dwelling. And that besides that, A D U be equivalent to the standard manufactured home size, which is, I think it's almost, well, maybe. Four hundred and fifty square feet more than Port Townsend, for example, and their A D U policy, at least that's what it was, until as Joel mentioned, the cities are now forced to. To try to come up with ways to allow two A D Us, or they have to allow two A D Us per parcel, just like we're going to be doing. If we haven't already, I think we might have taken care of this last year with our own port hat lock engineering, but that's again with urban services. Anyway, back to the A D U question, and then as you brought up, San Juan County was challenged on their policy. And didn't fare so well at the hearing sport, and that put the rest of the counties on notice because the hearings board basically said. Well, we're not gonna go and make every other county change their policy to conform to what we've just decided here. But then if you start changing your own policies, that does open you up to a challenge, which is one of the reasons why I think. You know, over the last few years, there's been some reticence to be on the leading edge of that particular issue, because we already are, we already have a fairly liberal policy. And just speaking with other planning directors around the state, seems like every county has a different policy about this, you know. Some people were amazed to hear like, really, you've allowed A D Us on every single parcel for twenty-five years, and said, yeah, no one's really. Said boo about it, we're lucky, I guess, and others, you know, others. Um, maybe you have other policies that are similar to ours. Anyway, my understanding though was that the A D U bills, and there were several of them last session. Did not pass, and then there was maybe, maybe you know something I don't about what's happening in this session. But I thought that there was still some talk about an A D U, but the A D U, the last A D U bill that I saw, not a Lammers housing bill, but an A D U bill. Was actually, in a sense, worse than our current policy, because it actually the square footage was lower than what we currently allow, and so. It the good news would be sort of a blanket policy across the state that would essentially enable what we've been doing for twenty-five years. The bad news is that it's actually worse than what we currently have, so again, I think that the climate around that is changing, uh so maybe we'll. Maybe with increased understanding that there'll be some more um. I guess courage on the part of the legislators legislators, if you will, to go for something that uh to codify something in the law that. A lot of counties are already doing, but there is another side of the story, there's apparently, you know, legislators that are. That are on the other side of that, thinking that, and and perhaps in conjunction with other groups, that that's. Too much of uh a change from what GMA wanted in the first place, which again, I don't think GMA was. Was um direct about it, I think it was just more rural character, but I don't think it said yes or no to A D U specifically in the act, right, so. So I think these things are being worked out, but the last thing I heard was that no bill passed, so I don't know if you have something I don't.
I think I was thinking about the urban ability to have to.
Okay, yeah, that's more like you have to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and isn't that why we are the authority on this? Because we wrote our rural character definition.
Fortunately, the hearing's going to.
For a long time, but we're the authority in our on our rural character, we're the authority on what that means.
And I'll go back to what you said, Matt, earlier, so your original question was, how does this state, what is this year's work plan, how does that particular question fit in, so. I guess I would say that, as you know, you've been in the planning commission, and you in particular have been working on this issue for a few years now. We were able to get some of the elements passed in the last couple of years, some of the elements of. Changing the definition of family to, you know, to take away a constraint. Um, I know that you've had conversations, we've been working with. Um, our building official with respect to the building code issues between residential, commercial and and definition of the kitchen, for example, and what's the sleeping quarters and. By the way, we do allow, for example, like uh. Satellite bedrooms on a parcel, so already you've got stuff, and again, this is us, I think, pushing the envelope a little bit. Um, it's all about the building code and the health code in that regard, and I think you had a. A visitor from environmental health, I wasn't here at that meeting last year, and you talked about some of the constraints from that direction, I know that the our own environmental public health. Um, is working on their own health code right now, so there's, I'd say there's an opportunity to have a conversation in that direction, because we have a conversation. Around planning up until the point where we hit up against the health codes, and I know that our commissioners are part of the part of the board of public health, so.
About the deputy prosecuting attorney's office, is that worth discussing what's legitimately possible before we dig in too far? Um, should we earlier rather than later?
I guess I would say, okay, so back to your original question, what's going on this year? We are working on the conflict. As elements that cover a variety of things. We're focusing on compliance with the periodic update, meaning. That within the housing element, for example, as you know, we have to do some things that we've never done before, which is to try to plan for different income bands, that's a whole new. Thing, that's what we're focused on with our consultants. That said, though, anything that's related to that is on the table, so if the planning commission. Were to dive further into the regulations that you see in the Unified Development Code that. Aren't doing what you want them to do, and I think that's been our message pretty consistently all along, like, we've talked about some policy and things, we've made some code changes. Uh, if there's something policy-wise we should touch in in the housing element, it's on the table this year. If you want to work with the Housing Subcommittee of the Planning Commission and come up with a package of of regulations with with some staff assistance, whether it's George or Joel. And then you want to run that through, you want to run that through a legal risk analysis, yes, that we can do that. Um, the question is, can we do it all in one year, but I think paying attention to legislative session to see what they're doing is one thing we should be doing. And some of our neighbors or other other jurisdictions, but yeah, some of the things we might just have to be making up ourselves, so.
But yeah, and I think I I want to encourage everybody to feel good about that, because I think the people are waiting on us or what come, or Island County or somebody. But another, you know, like um you mentioned San Juan, so there's some counties, we can learn from all those failures. And uh I do believe that we're a great county for an idea that can make a statewide compromise.
I will say this, I know that Heidi just says she goes down to Olympia almost every week or every week now, every, so a new role for Heidi. Um, and, you know, I I meet with my planning director colleagues from, especially in the county level, across the state, we have a. Our own sort of, usually when the. When this, the city and the county planning directors meet in the fall, it's like dominated, I would say, by the cities, because there's more cities, right, than only thirty-nine counties. Um, but we've we've got our own Washington State Association of County and Regional Planning Directors. Organization that I've been uh roped into essentially in a in a on the board of that group, so we're planning a a two-day conference in Ellensburg for the spring. And housing is absolutely something we've already started talking about and we will be talking about, so I guess I would say as an offer. You've got a set of questions or theories or ideas that you want me to run by. Colleagues around the state, other counties that are wrestling with the rural housing issues, that happy to carry that.
And I attended that one time, um, and on Brent's behalf, and I had to talk, it was really popular, the ideas and. We haven't gotten very far since, but the um, I even got to ask a question, did ecology rep? And I said, is the state ready for a comparable to organic standard for housing? And I just asked a question, and then he looked at me, he said, I don't know. Which was the most fascinating answer from, you know, the person giving the speeches, um most encouraging to me. Um, everybody was nice, the Mason County, you know, directors from neighboring counties loved what we were doing, they want us to succeed. So we've, that's all that helps, thank you so much for outlining how we can help and while all this. All these priorities are going on as well.
Can I follow up with one other question? And that's, so what are the opportunities in developing the housing elements for the conflict, which is the main? Body of work sort of planning.
We put this stuff in the last conflict to lay out the groundwork for us to create this, so we're just still trying to implement the last conflict, but it's, you know, to include stuff is.
And I think also there there are other definitions that we can clarify that I think will go a long way towards helping us. Um, it becomes a dance at some point, um often, you you have a discussion, we're gonna go, what makes it a. You know, what makes it a accessory dwelling, it's a kitchen, what makes it a kitchen, uh an oven, why does the oven make it a kitchen, because it needs a vent? Okay, so uh, so I think that, yes, there are opportunities in this cycle to get some of these things changed that are gonna help us, and. My example of kind of mimicking that farmstead development with more housing within it, as long as the site conditions allow it. And it and we're able to improve on it, then that that's one of those seems like a win-win, whether, you know, and we are trying to look at it with the eye of GMA. Very specifically looking at their definitions and whatnot, and so, yeah, I I think so.
I think so too. I like it, it's a good idea. Thanks, everybody.
I have a question about Fort Hadlock, U G A. That seems like it, yeah, I do that, and I I I can't, I'm, I'm gonna ask a question, I expect a very broad answer. It seems like an outstanding opportunity to address portable housing. Uh, and where are we in that process? And this is for the commissioners, I guess, or for Joel. Is that, this seems like a, now's the right time, be thinking about it.
Yeah, we're not gonna single-family uh home our way out of the housing crisis, right?
No.
And so, yeah, density is really important. Um, I mean, we had a presentation from Brent today talking about kind of finding, figuring out the topology that would be appealing to people in that, I I think. Figuring out that landscape is is critical, but we're kind of. Um. Can't totally do it until you have the sewer in, is is my understanding, kind of plan-wise, right? I mean, just because, again, that conservative, if you're, if you are changing the landscape as you're building the infrastructure. You open yourself up to to challenge.
But in terms of process and Brent, the chief strategy officer did. Uh, run a series of design charrettes toward the end of twenty-four, I guess it was kind of. Late third quarter, George, I got to participate in that from the housing perspective and. Um, and it was um basically taking some middle housing concepts through study of other. Um, other housing solutions in other communities and and really kind of. Asking the community a series of questions, where do you want to see housing, what kind of housing do you want to see, do you? Um, do you appreciate of this concept of middle housing, what do you like about it, what do you, you know? And why? It was, it was a very detailed conversation where he captured. A lot of concepts from community participation, so I'm looking forward to seeing sort of a a distillation. Of what was learned there, which will then be fed into the conflict process as well, so I know there's been a lot of. Of focused work on trying to really understand how middle housing could play a role and. And specifically in that Fort Hadlock, I don't know, G M.
And just to add on to that, Heather's describing work that Brent and others did, starting last year, maybe in late a year before. And there was a memo that Brent came up with at the end that had a lot of information about. Um, what he learned from talking to developers and others, um when he did that outreach. Some of that information we've already done, and and planning commission was involved in that, we made some changes to our. Title, uh this is part of our title eighteen Unified Development Code that relates to the Fort Hadlock Urban Growth Area, we made some changes to those urban standards. To try to prepare for the availability of sewer in the year twenty twenty-five, and here we are. Um, sewer, as far as I understand, there's no, been no change to the schedule that it should be available, May, June, July, somewhere in that timeframe. This year, we expect sewer to be available, we also have regulations that enable. Applications to come in for our land use review prior to that sewer becoming available. And we anticipate an application for from Habitat for Humanity in the month of February to to prepare for their hundred and thirty-four or whatever.
Hundred and thirty-six.
Hundred and thirty-six, thank you, hundred and thirty-six unit development near the county library, so. We we already did, and one of the things we did to help enable that to happen is we changed, we made sure that we had something called unit lot subdivision provisions within our urban code. Something that we mimic actually from Fort Townsend and Fort and Fort Angeles, essentially, we're we're becoming city planners, we've been county planners all along. And we're, in a sense, trying to learn a lot more about urban planning now that we really have a sewer coming. When that, when those urban standards were adopted almost twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago.
Wow.
Uh, we knew what we knew then, and a lot of things have changed in the world, in the state and in our own community, so we're trying to catch up, so I think the second half of that. Would be to take some of the other concepts that Brent laid out, I mean, we even talked about things like. Moving away from traditional urban densities as reflected in minimum and maximum depth of dwelling units per acre to more of a. This is the townhome area and this is this area and it's based more on imagery and things around middle housing. The other thing we're doing, as Joel mentions. Is a fairly small grant, but it's part of our update for twenty five. Is that we took a look at the state's offering of a model middle housing ordinance. And we've been in conversations with other communities. I think George has been paying attention and participating in some virtual meetings or. Planners around the state and others. And we're basically want to make sure that we're not artificially or inadvertently limiting middle housing opportunities. Where, where we're investing all this time and effort into building a sewer in Fort Hadlock. So we're also doing that. Then it's your question, anything else?
Yes, it is.
Raises questions for me, like, uh, where are these developers coming from? You know, that's, uh, you know, we're, I don't know, maybe this is a question for LD or Kevin, but I mean, we're. We're a community of single family home builders, right? And uh, the, the, the profit, the, the model. The investment model for building these is, is different and it hasn't panned out so far. And you know, we're not going to get. The multifamily, I think Joel asked, why aren't we getting multifamily development in our Lambert's that we, we allow it in now and. Is it because we don't have homegrown multifamily developers? Or is there something we can do to create that kind of? Skill set and investment cotton? I see you, John. I know we're, we're, uh, we're, 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 we're building some in, in, in the Brennan and PR too, but we're talking, you know, really. Small scale too, right? I mean, that, how do we grow it from the ground up?
So other than Brandon, how many Lambert's do we actually have?
No, Will Seans a Lambert, uh, Chimacum, Wawa Point, there's two in Brennan.
Okay, lots of Lambert's, but the rural village centers are like the main ones, right? Uh, but there's like neighborhood crossroads, there's, there's all different categories. Well, it's really different from a developer's standpoint because you know, it, it, it has to pencil out and, and I think what. What we've been seeing here is that the only way it pencils out is because there's other assistance money that's coming in to be able to. Help make, I mean, I. Uh, before I lived here, I built multifamily housing in California. And um. We used to do it all, all, all over the place, but, but a big part of it was. The infrastructure was already there and the ground was recent.
That's it.
And, and we, and even, even, I mean, I keep looking at the. Fort Hadlock UGA and, and say, okay, how many other large parcels are there that can be? Either rezoned or whatever for multifamily housing. That, does Fort Hadlock have? I mean, not that many. Maybe the, where, where Habitat is gonna do, you know, develop the old runway. And that was, that was a prime one, but there's.
There's a few, there's a few.
There's a few, but not very many. Not enough to, for, to look at it from a development standpoint, wow, this is a great spot. Three hundred or. Some of the commercial zoning areas that are. Yeah, but, but there's a real, there's always been a real. Has led to see on the county side from rezoning that away from the commercial side to be able to do. But I mentioned that there's, you know, there can be flexibility.
Well, a lot of the commercial areas, large drain field areas that. Some of the landowners are interested in developing housing on the drain field portions. Behind the Kibble Center, for example. But that economy of scale that you're talking about is really critical. It's, it's actually really similar to what. Brent was telling us today, the experience that you had when you were going out for designers to get the stock plans. Uh, you know, submitted and he. Realized nobody's applying, why isn't anybody applying? And he realized, you know, in Seattle. Uh, if somebody applied, they would then, you know, be able to say, okay, if I'm gonna do this for free, I'm gonna make my money. Because a bunch of people are gonna then buy these plans from me, right? He was describing this to me, to us today. And this is, whereas here he had to then go and get some brand dollars to support that because. We realized these designers weren't actually going to make their money doing that because of this economy escape issue. And I think we run up against that in, in other ways. In the county as well, there are those kind of tipping points for making money on these kinds of deals. And if you can't hit that. Same with hotel development, can't get a number of keys. It's not worth building. And that's similar, you know, same with.
Isn't it the third owner of a hotel can actually make a profit?
Exactly.
You, you were mentioning drain fields. I didn't finish that. How, how are drain fields impact this?
Because when the sewer goes in, you won't need that reserved drain field area. You can use that. So that's land that, that'll be buildable with the sewer. So there's a number of. Commercial parcels of land and. Residential and RV parks.
Like the areas around Farino's Pizza and the, and the demo office, I mean, all those big grass areas or all their separate.
That there will become buildable.
And all the lots throughout Hadlock where house sits on one and drain one was on the second lot, I mean theoretically, it should be. Theoretically.
Peninsula Housing Authority has a lot of drain filled area around their apartments and had luck that they're talking about building. That number of apartments again, adjacent to their existing apartment. So there's. It's not like we've been sitting out in Hadlock not thinking about these opportunities. That's why Habitat's doing what they're doing. And it was because of a conversation we had at a community foundation board meeting that I was like. We need to start looking at the zoning within the UGA, the future UGA and figure out where we can. Do dense housing. And that, and then now we have Habitat building a hundred and thirty six units of housing on that airstrip. Because it was for sale, you know, and I was like, someone needs to buy that. Now. So it's, it's just this, um. Just gonna take somebody with that, with the vision.
I think also it takes the sewer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, because I mean, we're all excited with somebody going in. You know, I wonder why the Lambert's aren't being built? There's no infrastructure, right? The amount of infrastructure going in, guess what? It's going in down at Black Point. Let's, let's get Black Point rolling. Uh, it's, it's in it, Brennan. We, we go by it all the time, goes right by the post office and the fire department and the school. We aren't hooked up to that, but we still pour very good sorbom down the. Drain.
There's not enough capacity, they're full in the summer.
It's just, it's one of those things where it's, it's, um, I worked with the developer on Rainier Street to develop, you know, thirty six apartments. The reason it went in, infrastructure was there. Eight hundred thousand dollars to take compared to a similar project I just did in Pierce County.
Right.
Um, if we can utilize the ones that we have and that we've got and that we're getting. You know, that's how, you know, we're going to be kickstarting those areas. Um. Uh, the Lambert's are just, you know. Not everyone's got water in Quilcian, these, you know, there's no fire flows. There, there are so many other things going on there that it's, it's a. It's a large mountain to climb. Um, and to. For us to hope that the private sector is going to come in and do something about it. Well, again, let's let. Private sector come in and do it where they can and doing it in a, in a great way. So let's go. Let's, let's get that going. And let's, you know, we've got Hadlock rolling, we can get Black Point rolling, maybe we can get something figured out. I mean, the last time I talked to state officials about. Brendan, I thought we already saw that, Kevin. Well, we're still, you know, going right by there with it. Um, and we've got floods, you know, FEMA, we got all kinds of. Issues in different areas that, um, I think are. Uh, challenging, but, um, yeah, I mean. I, I can say from a developer's point of view, they immediately looked at regulations that were stopping them. We talked with the city. We were able to, for instance, put residential on the bottom level and we didn't have to build it twelve feet tall. Those are two regulations that were killing the project that during that sub area. Plan, we were able to negotiate, um, because of some buying in during the, the process. If we, the developer got his ideas through and they all worked out and then when it came to stormwater and they said, connect here and here with your pipe and you're good. He was like, all right, this is a done deal. And we got more apartments. Originally density only allowed twenty seven apartments and we got thirty six after that plan revision on regulations. And notice now another one's gone in in any of that area and I can tell you why. They have to be twelve foot and have commercial on first level, right? We're planting ourselves out of, out of housing, literally. And we're, we can change that conversation to plant ourselves into it.
Can I say something? As, as a farmer. And I'm looking at, you know. How much housing? Do we want to accept in this county? Do we want my farm to be? Uh, sixty houses or producing food for the people who are here? You know, we, this is a rural county, so, and how do we preserve? The rural nature of the county. And. My farm was one of the original homesteads in Posen, it was six hundred and fifty acres, a section of land. My fifty acres are all that's left and it's under continuous pressure. You know, people, I get developers once a week. Wanting to buy my land and other farmers do too. So. You know, I have a lifestyle I want to preserve. I mean, I, we need housing. How do we feed the people? I live, I grew up in Kitsap County. I watched all the farms go away. And we can feed, we have food security in this county right now. So how? What do we do? To protect the farms? And, and I can put an ADU on my farm. I, you know, there's, there's three families who live on my farm. Oh, I don't think one of them's legal probably because it was there before I bought it, but, um. You know. So where's the balance here? Do we want to just keep growing and growing until we're like Kitsap County in Seattle? Or do we want to? Keep our farms and keep our rural places? And, and I know that only. Twenty percent of the land in this county or less, seventeen percent, I think, is developable land because of the park. But. I feel like we also have a responsibility. To preserve the clean water that comes out of the park and the farms are a filter. That takes the, um. The, the water that goes into the bay. So, so where do we get the balance here?
I think that rural housing thing we're working on and it's a good balance. I mean, that's what we've been.
Yeah.
And also. You know, all the pro-farm language in the plan and. And also a, a. A reasonable pro-environment, pro-farmer. And I think we're all with you. I know when we talk about housing in rural areas, don't think that we're. We're not sacrificing. We're not, we're not, we're not talking against.
No, I under, I understand that, but there is, there's. My point is. Do we want to keep growing and growing and growing? Or do we want to say, okay, there's a finite number of, amount of land we can.
Growth is inevitable. I mean, the, the, the state has been growing since its inception and it's not going to stop. We can't say.
Well, then who's going to feed the people if growth is inevitable? Uh, there's houses everywhere.
In ways that preserve farms? I mean, that's what we're really talking about. We don't want to sacrifice farms. We want to.
Yeah, playing for it. That's why UGAs are, are actually really supportive of. Of what you're talking about because they actually concentrate where we can and agree we will develop. Keeping it. Less developed in, in other areas. And so those are really good tools to keep that going. I also have seen some communication going around, um, both. Because the city's comp plan is happening at the same time as the class, uh, the county's comp plan. Happening and there are a couple of groups that, um, I've asked to kind of jump into that are trying to make sure that, um. Both urban farming and urban adjacent farming, so urban farming within the cities. Coming on and urban adjacent counties is maintained as a high priority. So there are some groups that are. Kind of pulling together to make sure to add that voice to the comp planning process, which really supports your balance concept. Um, so I know there are people really trying to make sure that that. That balance voice is always there or is reminding us that that's.
Well.
Appreciate you speaking on it too, it's important.
It is really important.
Well, it's, it's, we also have. A county that is big on recreation with the parks and the waterways. And. The farmyard is the filter that keeps the bay clean. And I, I think it's. Incredibly important to. To keep large chunks of land. And, you know, my farm. That used to be a section of land is only fifty acres now. So how much? You know, how much more will get diluted? Or where you want over my dead body, but I'm old too. But, um. I just think the food supply and the rural lifestyle. Is well protected. I mean, we have, we board horses on our farm and we keep it affordable. For middle class people to ride and very, very, it's. It's. I think our board is half what it is in Fort Townsend, so that. My goal is to make, to provide not just farming, but recreation for middle class people. And that's a really, you know, we can't just. Make things so expensive. That we eliminate the middle class.
Housing is kind of. Doing that right now though, unfortunately, you know, the, the, the market driven. Housing.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
You need someone to work on your farm, right?
Oh, yeah, and we have, we have housing on our farm, but it's not legal housing. It's been there for years. But every, you know, if you. Every single farm in the county. Has illegal housing.
What we're proposing is trying to legalize it in a fashion and that also protects the environment. That's honestly what we're talking about. We can codify it.
Yeah.
Regulate it in a way that it's now, you know, all the septic systems are working as they should, all the water comes in, all the stormwater is being handled. But there's also ways to take that, say stormwater, why don't we throw that into a system that feeds our toilet tanks instead of the drinking water that we have to pump from. Fifty miles away at a lake.
Yeah.
You know, using smart systems like that to put less of an impact, but all of it is infiltrated back onsite, filtered and discharged into the sand. You know, just to keep it, you know, doing the right thing, but. Do it in a way that's smart.
Well, and, and you know, like I have a well that draws a hundred and fifty gallons of wind. I could feed a lot of people. But I, we, we irrigate out there. But it's, um. I just. Think that, uh. We have to consider that the feeding of this. Community also, so.
And that resilience is also a part of, think of that plan that we're talking about, um, ways to. Um, not just incentivize, but regulate in a way that. You know, to work. It, it, I'll say by February fifth, the draft after Georgia, I give it a chance to work on to a bit and. Um, I got a next note around the, um. Edits from Matt. We'll throw that up and get everybody on board with where we're at and then get everything by getting.
Well, the, the other thing that several of the farms that I know of have is we have salmon baron streams that go through the wind and. We are continually working to keep those open. I crap and count the fry. Every year to make sure they're still getting up the stream. And it's, that's something we, we rarely talk about here is the. What is it the natives say? So goes the salmon is the health of the, the land and the community around it. And, um. So. You know, that's. We need to make sure that this whole ecosystem in this county, because we have a really rich ecosystem. Is protected from the fish to the land, to the housing. And, um. It's just. My soapbox because I happen to.
Yeah, and the culverts that we now have placing all of those throughout the Jefferson County, so the salmon haven't much, I mean, just looking at. The edges of the road where the culverts come in so much. You know, more natural than they used to, but you know, I don't know if you've noticed it yet, but it seems like. Um, the differences almost within weeks or months. I would be curious what the.
Kind of drifting off housing. Uh, farther and farther. Uh, maybe we should kind of go back to that.
I'm sorry.
Really an issue here.
They are an issue.
Not for housing.
Can I, can I just make one comment that kind of brings them, the two together? It's actually something you and I were talking about. Um, at, just before the BOCC meeting this morning, I brought in, I'm still kind of getting set up in my office and I'm. Setting up, bringing in some new things and I have a, um. Framed woodcut. Uh, picture of a, of a kingfisher, I think it is. Um, that I got in two thousand and seven from the Cascade Land Conservancy when I was asked to come and speak about the. Kind of the nexus between the built environment and land conservancy. And this was quite a while ago, right? Two thousand and seven. When, um, you know, I was kind of coming from the historic preservation, built environment side. And we were really talking about then and now need to continue talking about how these two conversations. Do need to live in the same room, right? And it's not, it doesn't, you know, we can. Talk about conservancy and about, um, food security and all of the ecosystem. Health and sustainability and all the things that you're talking about. There are ways to. Health and sustainability and all the things that you're talking about. There are ways to have that conversation live in the same room. That we're talking about developments. And they don't have to be mutually exclusive. It's difficult. Um, but there are ways to put those conversations together and have them support one another. And I think we need to find those nexus points. More in rooms like this so that we don't spin off into unsustainable development and that we are balancing it with. The, the concepts that you're bringing to the table, but that it doesn't just stop. The conversation about development because we need that too.
Well, and, and one of the things that I would like to see happen in, in dense housing. Is it that it be on a big enough piece of land? Where people, you know. We couldn't get all those houses on one single house development, but we could have a multi-unit development and still preserve. Orchards and pastures and places for kids to have horses and pigs and. And um. All of that kind of stuff. So I think that's a concept. We have to, to look at. I mean, I happen to have. Grandkids in um. In future farmers of America. And the. They come all the way from Port Orchard to do projects on their farm because there aren't farms left in Port Orchard. And I don't want to see that happen here. When I see those kids are going to be the people who are feeding us. And um.
So if we decide together where to develop. And we agree that's where we're going to do it. I mean, that's what you did when you created. The U G A and you know, may not be the only place that you develop, but then you can decide, okay, in these other places, we're going to develop differently than we develop. U G A is where we're really going to focus and we're going to go for it. We're going to get maximum. Um, you know, housing there. We're going to get, we're going to build community there. Going to use tools like middle housing there. Yeah, we might not use elsewhere.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that, but then I'm saying that in the same boat. The U G A brings in a large population of people. You have to have enough land to be defined. That's actually what Green Ball is always bringing to the table.
I think we've, we've pretty much covered this pretty well. As you can see, housing is a very hot item for the planning condition. And we've spent actually several years.
We have, and I'd like to make one other point because what both. Heidi and Christine said were both accurate and part of what is already in what we're proposing, you know, in the R C W rural character. It, it emphatically states over and over again, the natural environment and the built environment, and the two have to coexist. So that's absolutely part of what we're proposing. And when we're talking density, even the density of talking about is three to five, not. Thirty or anything like that. It's still, and the clustering, like you were starting to drive towards. That is part of the proposal. It has to be clustered because we do want to preserve. And that again maintains that rural character definition within R C W. So all of what we're saying here is following along with what we're proposing. And by February fifth, everyone will have a copy of it.
So the um, county adopted a middle class, I believe, of. Commerce's approach projections. And then the birth management steering committee was going to need and kind of assess how much of that goes in the city, how much of that coming. And then I missed a bunch of meetings this summer, um. I for other reasons. Where did that land? I'll just. All about with, but how, how many? How much of that percentage are we looking to, to fill in our? Um, you know, for clusters or.
Forty, forty. Yeah, eighty percent urban, uh, twenty percent to rural allocation, urban rural. And the, the urban's forty percent for council and forty percent to Fort. Um, we're working on our land capacity analysis now with a consultant and um, still working with some preliminary and data. But uh, as you've heard us talk about, we have to, this time around, uh, the legislature has required us to. Look at housing by income band. And quantify housing need by income band, and then also where geographically is this going to occur? And so uh, our preliminary information for the urban growth area for Fort Hattlock. Uh, is that uh. We've got the high need and we need more dense. It's like uh. This is just a recent conversation with consultants, which how can we, we really need to amp up the density. In order to achieve our goals. And so we'll be. Proposing different options of what that might look like, uh, I think we already have through Brent's work. And um, and mixed use. Or uh. Higher drilling, number of drilling units per acre or something entirely new and um. Project-based uh, density or something like that. So there's a lot of different options. But um, we don't have. A high growth rate in the county statewide, probably not really by Jefferson County isn't the. Fast-growing county. And so our numbers, fifty-nine hundred people within twenty years by twenty forty-five. And uh, so that eighty percent to um. Urban, I can't do it in my head tonight, but um.
Fifty-nine hundred is the total.
Howdy, why? So we're talking about um. Fourteen to the Fort Hattlock, same amount of four thousand and then the residual or the twenty percent rural.
Yeah.
But then we're also struggling with how do we achieve um. Uh, certain, I used, uh, income bands have then been related to housing typologies. And how do we achieve these housing typologies in the different parts of the county? We need infrastructure. So we might say, well, closely now has a water tower that got fire flood. Maybe there's some allocation to that land and the rural village center. Um. But really the Fort Hattlock urban growth area is our. Opportunity with the sewer to provide these urban services and, and those urban densities that we've been having to hold down.
So concurrent to all of this talk about planning that we're doing right now, the county's also been undertaking a. Community wildfire protection planning process. And as part of that, we're submitting a large, about a million dollar community wildfire defense grant in the next month. That I've been working on with a number of folks in the county. And I saw an article interestingly this morning from the Sideline Institute. Um. Saying. I, I forget what the headline was, but it was like, we need to look at what Bend, Oregon is doing. So I looked. And what they're doing is emphasizing infill development. And I think that that's something as a fire prevention strategy. So I, I think it's important when we consider other external factors that we're thinking about in the community as we have these conversations. How are we going to be prepared for the fires that we'll see here in the future? And what's our best mechanism of defense and planning for how to uh, allow for our communities? To be able to respond to those. And I think that it's. It's a good time to look at. Interesting articles like are coming out this morning from the Sideline Institute to see what Bend, Oregon is doing, where they were planning to. Expand their U G A, but instead, instead they emphasize the housing development within their existing U G A boundary. To um. To have a more compact urban growth area that was more defensible. So things like that need to be factored into. This conversation and all the conversations we're going to have over the course of the next few months if we do this planning work because it's. It's an external factor that we all are going to live with for the rest of our lives.
And I would suggest for the rural character elements like any rural proposals should include. A really high bar for engagement in that way. I got to visit um. Bonnie Dune outside Santa Cruz this year. And um, my friend was. You know, defending the, I mean, the whole community had to rally. And after the fire, and I walked through, saw tons of redwood sprouting and everything. It's amazing with the fire. Just um. Really scary. Of course, and the community decided to get a giant water tank through the fire defense and things like that happened after the fire, but. They could also happen as part of a rural character planning process. It'll be like, well, you're living rural, you have some responsibility. And this is how you can help.
Also, we need to keep in mind the wildland urban interface that nearly took effect this year. It'll, it's still coming down since they work out all their inks and. Prostors and building code and the rest of it. So. It'll get here. For long and anticipating and trying to think about how important that, you know, and I like the whole, you know, defensible. Um, even, even on the house scale, it becomes less defensible and you can.
This is the interesting things for me about community planning because Ari answered a question. I was thinking of an answer and then Joel started it and then. And then Heidi brought up something else. And so, and then he brought that up and Matt brought up, and so. And so all of these things seem like there's these isolated exercises, whether it's the woo wee or the coordinated wildfire. Community wildfire, wildfire protection plan for the coordinated water system plan that we're also doing. And there are, there are isolated sort of individual projects and, and they represent milestones, like they need to finish this twenty-five update, need to update our C W S P. And of course, it's Gittero, so we'll, we'll be touching these things again next year and the year after, but. Um, it's an opportunity for us to try to meet that challenge of tying these things together. If we start talking about. Making neighborhoods that are, that are well defended against wildfire and. And we're also talking about what about our water resources from here forward into the future? Do we have enough fire flow for those areas as well? And where do we not have those? And we shouldn't perhaps. Be developing as we are now anyway, without that assurance. And then, then we've got the woo wee, I know. Um. You know, D N R was tasked with improving some of the products and the mapping products that they, they had started out with in order. For them to be usable as planning products. Um, our own building official Phil Sessary and Fire Marshal. Um, is on a committee uh, to help D N R to give them advice. So we're participating in those statewide conversations. Um, back to your question, Ari, in the sense of like. Where are we at with that stuff? So in the past, it's been a relatively simple exercise that. Proceeded the city and the county going about their planning, you know, the. Uh, jointly, they would figure out which, which population projection we're going to choose and how are we going to allocate that? And then just go from there. And we did that. It's a little bit more complicated because now we have this model that we're, we're required to use from commerce. And we decided essentially at the end of that, and you can look at the resolution that the outdoor were adopted at the end of that process, but we decided to go so far with it. And figure out some of the basics so that the city can march off and do their work, and then we could march off and do our work. So actually, it's up to this body. Planning commission to advise the board on how we want to sort of fill out that model ultimately together with. Land capacity analysis and housing element and everything else we have to do with twenty-five updates. So still on the table in a sense to do some of those details. I'd also just, you know, remind ourselves is these are planning numbers, you know, are we going to get exactly that number of people in that number of years? Well, sure. So, but, but what we're doing is planning for that outcome because that's what the Office of Financial Management. Has told us that they think it's going to happen.
That was a free California wildfire, free. And we got a lot of people sent like uh. Santa Rosa area. Minnesota. Um, within recent years. And so we'll be prepared for it and it's. I bought a guitar from one of them. Great electric guitar, you know. Probably playing wildfires, so.
The F R T S has been standing up at the, the Board of County Commissioners meetings for decades saying. The fires are coming.
If we get fires, we might lose population. People are scared.
I, I think that's a. You know, uh, we've talked about evacuation plans for our farm because we're right at the base of the national forest. And I think a countywide evacuation, you know, what the fire down in Britain was here. Evacuated lots of animals and people. And it's something I think about a lot. Because having pasture that gets dry in the summer, a fire could just roll right across it and keep right on going down the. County. So I think it's, I mean, it's a worthwhile thing to talk about is. But, and then like I have a big well and a lot of people, there's between the big Quilcean River and the little Quilcean River, there's like. Five streams that go between them. There's a lot of water available for firefighting besides just in the bay. So we need to have a little bit better plan for that kind of stuff, right?
So evacuation planning is part of the community wildfire defense grant.
Yeah.
It's one of the three legs of the stool we're building that grant on. So that'll be a big part of that.
Well, I, I was amazed at how many people evacuated animals from that Brennan fire. It was wonderful. A lot of refugee, four-legged refugees on our.
A moment certainly back to our own Fort Hattlock, Firedale, Fort Hattlock urban growth area, who was mentioned before and acknowledged that, you know, even though our use table might say. Multi-family residential development is fine in our rural village centers. Really the constraint is infrastructure of one type or another, depending on which R C C you're talking about. And then we're focusing on, well, we need the density for it to pencil in Hattlock. How are we going to get there? Is there enough vacant land? Is redevelopment going to be the answer to the question? Um, and then we showed images, you know, Brett. Showed images in those stakeholder groups and, and we see like what we traditionally think of as middle housing in some of our bigger cities and so forth. There's another infrastructure constraint that I feel like I should bring up, um, which we just need to at least think about, which is. Just the stormwater infrastructure. So. Yes, we're building a sewer and we're starting in one section and it's been a long haul and a lot of effort to get there and a lot of money to get that one sewer. And of course, it's a system that can be expanded. So over time, we can fill up more of the original U G A boundary or maybe even expand it. But one thing that cities, and I think L D would probably acknowledge this, like when he developed in other areas that was, was ready for development. It's not just the sewer service. We've got a stormwater system set up. Most cities are stormwater cities. Fort Townsend has a stormwater system, you know, even as a small city, but certainly bigger cities like they collect and convey to a treatment. Facility. We don't have any of that in Hattlock really. So. That's something that we talked about when we started a conversation with public works about, but it's like, it's almost like one project at a time, right? But I guess. The Hattlock, excuse me, the Habitat project, just as an example, is fortunate enough. To be able with that old airstrip property being big enough to be able to infiltrate, infiltrate on site with a pond, right? But not every redevelopment project in downtown Fort Hattlock is going to have that luxury, even if you're using some of the space that was previously. Held for um, for the drain field or reserve drain field. So you've got to think about it a little bit. As a community, are we going to make that next step? Or can we seek funds and is that another project to try to get stormwater infrastructure? Such that you would actually have those herbal style middle housing densities that you're envisioning.
What about a smaller infrastructure like um, a shared pond? You're smarter, you know, versions of. It's just not here. Yeah, there's a lot of um, ideas in the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. It's on the Department of Ecology's website. That's the guidance we've adopted in our code and um. It, it has a lot of uh, even more urban things that we hadn't. It's, it's quite a. Yeah, it's a lot. It's a light reading.
I think there are a lot of options to consider, man. I think and, and Joel probably has read it more than I have, but there's, there is a stormwater analysis for the urban growth area of the Hattlock. And it basically said, we got great soils there, so we're lucky. Um, but I don't think it went as far as to say, you know, we're going to design a system or I think it basically planted on that question.
Yeah, we do now have in our, it's a plan, a. Goal, or maybe it's in the policies to consider um, some kind of. B structure or implementing with stormwater specifically. Consider some sort of. A toss or a payment system. As we develop. It's in there. It's been in there for a long, long time. Um. But maybe now it's getting more attention.
And I know that one of the tools in toolbox is the, one of the pervious surfaces kind of thing. So you've got a. A large structure and it's got rooms and you've got a lot of stormwater, but they discharge them into the parking lot and all disperses on site. I mean, it's, it's almost. You know, when I'm, whenever I'm crunching how many parking stalls I've got and how many units, it's a fifty fifty kind of thing. It's almost like. It's roof and half of it's parking and a little bit is left in the site. So it seems like. That with good soils, obviously, and all the rest, but it, it can be, you know. Pervious surfaces could probably handle most of that. I know there is additional costs, you know, and some of that. But um, you should certainly think that would be a very good. Who's the rain guard? Then, you know, you got area, a huge amount of areas sometimes just to disperse. Um, the peak flow moments, but uh, the great thing about pervious surfaces, they can take enormous amounts of water, more than it would ever come off of that within. Couple of inches of hour rain.
Think also the, the sequencing, we might. That might work out well for us because my understanding is there's half a billion dollars almost eight transportation budget for stormwater. Almost none of that's still spent yet. Um, because they kind of backed a little bit. I don't know how much of that would be. Available to people, but I have to watch it. Some. Can all be fair. Washed up to themselves. Uh, so. Hopefully in a couple of years. Hopefully in a couple of years.
Also, that uh Western Washington middle back development on the work that they've done, I mean, they got all the calculation and numbers and even guidelines. They're initially talking about the pervious concrete, but realize static location attire and creating. Untenwear, so they became a, you know, solid surface impervious at certain locations and parking stalls. The rest of it would be pervious and capable of, and so a lot of the stuff is technical.
That's that's about housing and as a preview of coming attractions, our latest uh thing about housing with short-term rentals. And that uh. They spawned some many good, interesting ideas in public on all sides of that topic. It was much more complicated than I would have imagined. Uh, so we're going to be working on that uh in the next few weeks and coming up with something to submit to you.
How many do you think we have in Incorporated Jefferson County? Got a number in your head?
Uh, Josh?
Uh, well, the number that some consultants who specialize this have told us is something under one four. Four hundred or so that haven't been permitted. A land program, but plus the seventy six that are permitted. I think I think that doesn't include the seventy six. Yeah, I think it was like five hundred and something, but some of them repeat, so I think that individual accounts, but you know. We're gonna, we're gonna dive into it and find out and we're gearing up. For uh for a rush, you know, for permits and things, let's be let's be adopted backwards.
So what what do you have to make people who are not who are renting? Under the table, so to speak. I mean, I could name a whole lot of people in Colcine. That what um. How are you going to get them to permit? I mean, I know a lot of them, what's the the rental organization go through hip cap? Can you put pressure on an organization like that to? Give a number that is in accounting?
Well, before you answer that, I think this is a question is is better addressed by the planning commission in the next several weeks. Uh, we're still developing the 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 ideas, so we'll let that go for for now.
Before the conversation, but I think we heard today that hip cap maybe and the camping ones aren't being addressed, only the the brick and mortar uh short-term rentals, right?
So it's perfectly legal to have as many hip campers as you want or not?
We're just not looking at it.
Yeah.
But environmental, you know, uh public health is going to look at.
No wonder.
I mean, they're going to prioritize complaints about uh unsafe sanitation issues, right? And we have, I mean, we have campgrounds in our code. We just haven't contemplated the modern. You know, been updating our regulations, just like we're trying to update the short-term rental regulations. So that'll be a next stage. I will just add that, as I said to the planning commissioner, we know this week, late last week. Uh, we'll be adding the staff report together with the agenda for the February fifth meeting, including a public hearing. So we'll let you know as soon as that's ready or just send it to you. And everything else, you know, the the actual proposal as it is right now is up on the web and of course. Your recommendation will be what it is. So whatever recommendation you reach, that's what we'll go to the board along with the staff recommendation. And we're trying to get all that done before April seventh, which is when the Morris Memorial expires. For the conversation.
Yeah, the topics that the commissioners, my commission would like to bring up this time. I would add to help maybe answer the question of, yes, the companies who rent short term will be. The focal point of enforcement. They're going to be there, right?
Yeah, that's part of what's reflected in in the draft that Corey prepared, you know, based on on conversations that you've had. That at the very least, the. The umbrella providers, the Airbnbs of the world and so forth, they'll have to. You know, they'll be involved and whoever wants to do. Have us that kind of commercial business on their property will have to show uh. Have to tell Airbnb that they have organics from the county.
We can address this as the planning commission meeting, I think it would.
And also at the last planning commission, I'm wondering if we can get an update on the Black Point, what's going on down there, the things proceeding. And all that kind of thing. So there, any kind of discussion, you know, we can add on that.
Are you guys have something in mind, Kevin?
Well, um, at the last meeting, I mentioned, for example, that it's been a while. We did our work on that. We know that, you know, we went through a lot of the. Building design, board of county mission, all the work, and it's just been going on for a while now and it's been something that's come up a couple of times in public discourse. Um, what's going on down there, you know, how is it developing? Is it developing? Um, and wanted to get E C D's perspective of how things are happening and told that, you know, there's going to be some discussions between. The last meeting, I mentioned it, and today, so I don't know if there's any updates on how things are seeing down there and all.
I have a short update, just the sense of, as you know, it's a, there's a permit application in place and then we'll be a public hearing before. A hearing examiner for preliminary plat approval. So so it is an administrative process, quasi judicial manner in that frame. So I won't, I won't be saying much about it really, except for that, we're gearing up towards that. We're waiting for a response for the developer on some specific. Um, review components from the initial submitted and and we met with the developer last week. In fact. Couple of them are here and you want to ask them yourself, but for a different perspective perhaps, but we're just waiting for those materials so that we can schedule that public hearing.
Public hearing is scheduled yet.
No, no, because we we receive those materials in order to then prepare staff with large schedule public hearing, but. I'm hoping that happens as soon as possible. I wish it already had.
We also may like to bring up, we've had a good discussion, I think, especially about housing. Uh, there's nothing else. I don't think so. Hopefully not.
Could I make a comment? Not, I don't have a neat topic. I just want to thank the the board for coming to speak with us. It's a highlight of our year and we deeply appreciate you making time to spend time with us.
I was too.
I would make it tomorrow.
Yeah, this means a journey.
And congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dad.
Good to see you.
Journey with you.